I now call the East Lime Zoning Commission regular meeting of February 15, 2024 to order at 7:29 PM. Can we do the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Once again, it's time for public delegations. Public delegations is a time when members of the public are invited to speak to the commission. I'd like to note if you're here to speak on the Bridebrook Project, you will also have a chance to speak during the hearing, which you might rather do that because it will go on the record. So is there anyone here that would like to speak tonight? Okay, come on up.
Lisa McGowan, 33 Spinnaker. I just wanted to remind the public, I don't know if this is on, it is, that again that Aunt Thurlow, you lost your seat by 41 votes and that will be on the record too, I hope. So Lisa McGowan, 33 Spinnaker, thank you.
Actually, I think it was 50. Anybody else?
Can I listen till after they send their presentation or press talk?
If you want to speak about the Bridebrook Project, you can wait till after their presentation. If it's anything else, go ahead and speak now. Okay, thank you. Okay, I think we can move on to...
Yes, one more.
There's one more?
Maybe with the green here?
Okay, come on up, I can't see you.
About the Bridebrook Project?
If you want to speak on Bridebrook, there'll be another time during the hearing? Okay. All right. So let's move on to roll call. I'm here, Mr. Peck.
Yep.
Yeah, Ms. Markovitz?
Here.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Ms. Kalal?
Here.
Mr. Paivo?
Here.
Mark Peterson is not here, and actually, he resigned yesterday, so he will not be here. Ms. Susko? Ms. Yuhas?
Here.
Thank you. Mr. Maholland?
Here.
Ms. LaRocco?
Here.
And our ex officio, Ms. Hardy? Great. All right, we'll move on to our public hearing. Mr. Peck, would you like to recuse yourself? And we will reseat Ms. Yuhas since she took Mr. Peck's place for the first part of the We will have a continuation of application of Bridebrook LLC for site plan approval for the modification of the December 3, 2020 approval of the 80-unit affordable housing multifamily residential development pursuant to Connecticut general statutes 8-30G, increasing the total unit count to 100 multifamily units on the westerly side of North Bridebrook Road, 20.24 acres, Maybank Street number 94, assessment map 9.0, lot 37.2. Just to note, this is a continuation of the hearing from February 1, 2024. We have received testimony from the applicant and comments from the public. Attorney Heller will address the commission first, and we will go to the public later in the meeting for any new comments. All memos from staff were read into the record at the last meeting of February 1, 2024, and are in your packets. Next, we will read into the record some updated memos. The first one from Ben North, Chief Operating Officer of Water and Sewer here in East Lime.
And there you go. From Ben North, Tuesday, February 13, 2024, 3:10 PM, to Bill Maholland, Jessica LaRocco, C.C. Bill Shear, subject Water and Sewer Review of Brookside Apartments, 94 North Brook Road, East Line. Mr. Maholland, I have reviewed the updated application of Bride Lake LLC located at 94 North Bridebrook Road in East Line. The site plan drawings revised on 2/6/24 have addressed my previous comments concerning utility site design. All of my recommendations have been incorporated into the latest revision, and I have no further comments to add. Thank you, Ben North, Chief Operating Officer of East Lime Water and Sewer.
Next, we have a memo from Bill Shear, the Deputy Director of Public Works and Acting Town Engineer.
Can you give me a second just to find these?
February 13, 2024, read the revised application of Bride Lake LLC, North Bridebrook Road, drawings revised to 2/6/24, and operations and maintenance plan revised 2/8/24. Mr. Maholland, I met with the Design Engineer Brandon Hanfield on 2/8/24 to review the stormwater design for the project and associated revisions to date. After lengthy discussions, I am satisfied that the application as revised meets the design requirements of the 2004 Stormwater Quality Manual and requirements of the Town of East Line. This manual is the current standard of design and is most appropriate design reference to be used for revisions to a previously approved project. The majority of the issues that arise with stormwater treatment structures occur during construction. Due to the sensitivity of the watershed, the Engineering Department recommends to the zoning commission that during the construction, the Design Engineer perform quarterly inspections of site erosion and sedimentation controls and stormwater treatment basins. Following these inspections, the engineer should submit a report to the zoning commission describing the current conditions and any repairs, maintenance, or modifications that need to be made. From a long-term maintenance perspective post-construction, the Engineering Department recommends that the zoning commission require an annual stormwater maintenance system, SMS, inspection by the Design Engineer. This report should be submitted to the town detailing current conditions and any action items that need to follow up. The revised plan and operations and maintenance plan submitted appear to have incorporated these recommendations. Respectfully, William Shear, P.E.L.S., Deputy Director, Public Works, Acting Town Engineer.
Thank you. And we have a third memo from a Mr. Trinkus. Would someone, you've just read two, would someone like to read this one?
Madam Chairperson?
Yes.
Point of order. Attorney Harry Heller, 736 Route 32 in Uncasville, representing the applicant. That letter that I'm familiar with is anonymous in nature, even though it's authored by Mr. Trinkhaus. He's indicating that he's representing an unidentified party. If that's going to be introduced into evidence, I think it should be introduced into evidence by the party who requested that report. Otherwise, I don't think it's appropriate for this proceeding.
Is the party present?
Madam Chair, I might suggest that we hold off on reading that at this time and that during the public hearing process, she would have an opportunity to read it into the record.
We'll read it into the record, but maybe we'll have the applicant continue his...
Could we just have...
No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, you don't have the floor right now.
You can read it.
As long as the party is identified on the record, then I will withdraw my objection.
All right. So let's...
Do you want to...
Let's put it in the record that the requestor is here, Michelle Maitland? Yeah.
681, I think it is. And I have made copies of the summaries because I didn't understand that they were already...
Oh, that's okay. All right, let's read it into the record then.
Point of order. Just a question. All the input that we're getting seems related to Bridebrook should be at the public hearing on Bridebrook so that it's in the record for Bridebrook. Am I wrong?
We're in the public hearing.
It is in the public hearing.
We're now in the public hearing.
Yes.
So if you don't mind...
Yeah, so it's on the record.
Yeah.
If you don't mind reading, I will... Thank you. ...read it out loud. Ms. Deverget Harris?
Madam Chairman, could people adjust their microphones and keep them close to themselves so that the audience can't hear?
Okay. Is there a way to turn these up or... Is this better?
Yes.
How about this? Speak really closely to the microphone.
Ms. Deverget Harris, Chairman, East Lime Zoning Commission, Pennsylvania, 10-8, Pennsylvania Avenue in Iantico, Connecticut, Re-Bride Lake LLC, North Bridebrook Road, East Line, Connecticut. Dear Ms. Deverget Harris and members of the zoning commission, at the request of a resident of East Line, I have reviewed the current plans and report for Bride Lake Project. Executive summary, A, it is not appropriate from a design point of view to combine different types of water practices in the same location as their functions are very different, and the combination will cause premature failure of the system. B, the stormwater system as designed does not reduce non-point source pollutant loads, which will be discharged into the groundwater under the site or to Bride Lake via Town of East Line drainage system to North Bridebrook Road. C, no pollutant loading analysis has been provided, which would show reductions in non-point source pollutant loads being discharged from the site, which is critical because of the high-quality aquatic resource when the runoff is being directed. D, many aspects of the stormwater management basement are not in compliance with sound engineering practices and the Connecticut DEP 2004 Stormwater Quality Manual and the updated Connecticut DEP 2023 Stormwater Quality Manual. Review comments. One, the current proposal proposes an additional 20 units with associated driveways and parking to be added to the original plan. This will be a significant increase in impervious area on the site. The original stormwater management system consisting of underground units has been eliminated and is to be replaced by the current proposal. It is imperative that the runoff from all impervious areas be treated by an appropriate stormwater management system, especially to reduce non-point source pollutant loads. Two, the stormwater basement is a hybrid type of system. It contains aspects of a bioretention system as well as a standard detention basin. However, the combination of these two approaches to stormwater management will cause premature functionality issues with the bioretention aspect of the basin. The use of multiple treatment systems in a series is an acceptable approach to stormwater treatment and is commonly known as treatment train. According to the video of the February 1, 2024, meeting of the zoning commission, the applicant stated that the four bays provide three times the required percentage of the WQV. However, the volume is only one aspect of the design of the four bays. As noted below, the four bays will not be effective at trapping and retention of sediments. Four, two four bays are shown at the two inlet pipes. Although the length-to-witth ratio of each four bay appears to meet or slightly exceed, the two-to-one ratio called for in the DEP 2004 Stormwater Quality Manual, 2004 manual, the depth of the four bays are only two feet, not the four-to-six feet required by the 2004 manual. Each sediment four bay is separated from the water quality retainer cell by a gravel filter berm. A gravel filter berm is very permeable and will allow turbid runoff to pass through from the four bay, which defeats the purpose of a four bay. Additionally, due to the shallower depth of the four bay, any sediment which might settle out in the four bay will easily be resuspended by subsequent storm events and carried into other parts of the stormwater basin. Again, this defeats the purpose of a four bay, which is to trap and prevent the resuspension of settled sediments. Five, the applicant stated at the February 1, 2024, meeting that the retainer cell will contain 3,000 cubic feet of storage and be planted. There is no such component found in the 2004 manual, and it has not been shown by the applicant how pollutants will be reduced in the retainer cell. It was also stated by the applicant at the February 1, 2024, meeting, it was stated the remainder of the WQV was provided in the filter bed. No calculations have been provided to demonstrate this statement. Furthermore, the applicant stated that the system will treat 250% of the water quality flow. This is not a valid statement. The water quality flow is a flow rate based upon the WQV and only used to size conventional pretreatment devices such as isolator rows or hydrodynamic separators. The 2004 manual requires that the WQV be captured and treated, and this requirement has not been met by the applicant. According to the test pits in the basement, sand and gravel are encountered at depths between 27 inches and 36 inches below original grade. As the bottom of the basement is approximately five feet below the existing grade, the bottom will be in the observed sand and gravel layer. This means that some infiltration will likely occur through the bottom of each four bay until the sediment builds up and clogs the gravel surface and the retainer cell. However, the sediment builds up and clogs the gravel surface and the retainer cell. However, the design does not provide reduction of non-point source pollutant loads, including total suspended solids, total phosphorus, total nitrogen, metals, and total petroleum The underlying sand and gravel do not provide reduction of pollutant loads. Nine, no pollutant loading analysis has been provided, which would demonstrate by calculations how much the above pollutants will be reduced by the stormwater management system. Simply providing the required water quality volume as storage in a basement does not equate, in a basin, does not equate to reducing the pollutant load offs, loads in the runoff. Ten, according to the cross-section of the filter bed rain garden, the bottom of the basement is sloped from the edges to the center of the filter portion of the basement to an underdrain. As the underdrain is located at a defined point, which will minimize or eliminate potential infiltration, runoff will follow the path of least resistance in the gravel to the underdrain and will not move vertically down into the underlying soil. Eleven, the soil media specified contains 30% topsoil, which will cause clogging of the soil media because the percentage of clay particles in the topsoil will be significantly higher than 2%, which is the maximum allowed in the bioretention soil media. It was clearly demonstrated by research at the University of New Hampshire Storm Water Center that bioretention media topsoil percentages of 20% caused failure of the bioretention system due to clogging. The elevations called out in the detailed conflict conflict with the information shown on the drainage drainage plan. An example of this conflict is that the top of the soil media, the bottom of the basement, basin, is called out as a 70.25 foot in the detail and elevation of 35 feet on the plan. Thirteen, according to the stormwater management report, the bottom of the main component of the basement, of the basin, will be set at an elevation of 35 feet. Below is a listing of the proposed water surface elevations within the main component of the basin. The significance of this will be explained in the next comment. A, water surface of a one-year storm equals 36.44 feet. B, water surface of a two-year storm is 36, equals 36.99 feet. C, water surface of a five-year storm equals 37.55 feet, .55 feet. D, water surface of a 10-year storm equals 38.06 feet. E, water surface of a 25-year storm equals 86.60 feet. F, water surface of a 50-year storm equals 39.10 feet. G, water surface of a 100-year storm equals 39.60 feet. Fourteen, when the infiltration practices such as bioretention are used for water storm detention, ponding depths greater than 12 inches above the soil media will have the following impacts to the media. A, compaction of the soil media surface due to the weight of water above it. 2.5 feet of water above a 12-inch by 12-inch area of soil media surface applies a pressure of 156 pounds to the soil media surface, and with the high clay content in the soil media will cause compaction. B, a pool of water over the soil media will also cause fine sediment to settle out on top of the soil media, further increasing the clogging of the media surface. A copy of my professional CV is attached to the record. Please feel free to contact my office with, if you have any questions concerning this information. Respectfully submit us, Trinkhaus Engineering LLC, Stephen D. Trinkhaus, P.E.
Thank you. Attorney Heller, would you like to make some comments?
Good evening. Again, for the record, Harry Heller, 736 Norwich, New London Turnpike, Uncasville, representing the applicant Bride Lake LLC. At the February 1, 2024, public hearing, I requested that Commissioner Paivo recuse himself. He felt that he did not need to. I'm going to introduce two things into the record and again, repeat my request. The first is the web link to the interview on the Renshaw Report that I referenced on February 1, that I want that report in the record. The second is a flyer that was circulated prior to the November election, addressed to East Lime voters. And I'm not going to read the whole thing, but it states, "Last month, I told you I'm running for the zoning commission, a bit about my 35 years as a town planning professor and consultant, and I asked you to send me your ideas. From your thoughts and mine, I've compiled these priorities. Stop overdevelopment. People know moderate growth happens, and when planned well, it can make the town better. They just don't want big, ugly, misplaced developments. Unfortunately, you've seen overdevelopment approve downtown, rural land loss to condos on Lake Patagansett, historic homes lost to dollar stores," and this is the key part, "and ugly apartments built on rural Bridebrook." The applicant submits that this represents a predisposition and bias against this application, and that you should recuse yourself from further consideration."
We'll have this...
The record?
Mm-hmm. It's A and B.
Exhibits. Do you have a number?
Mr. Paivo, are you still not recusing yourself?
Yeah, that's true.
Okay. Please mark that in the record. Thank you.
I think you could, for tonight, you could mark them A and B.
A and B, mm-hmm.
For tonight's hearing, which is the 2/15. Thank you.
Now, I'm going to introduce a series of exhibits into the record. Some of them may be in, some were submitted to staff, but I want to make sure that they're part of the record. The first is the February 6, 2024, update of the site development plan for the project that I'll go over in detail in my presentation.
Chair, for now, if you could mark the exhibits and write on them what they are so we can track them later on.
The next is a February 8, 2024, update to the operation and maintenance plan for the maintenance of the project, particularly with respect to stormwater management. And that incorporates the recommendations that were referenced in the reports read into the record this evening from both the Water and Sewer Commission and the Town Engineer.
Okay.
Bill, do you have a list of the exhibits from the last meeting?
Yes.
I want to make sure that the two traffic reports are in the record. I know I testified from them, but I'm not sure that they're in the record. Okay, I don't see those there. So...
Thank you.
The first that I'm going to introduce is the original traffic report that I testified to at the February 1 hearing, prepared by Boobaris Traffic Associates, where he analyzed the traffic impact of a contemplated 250-unit development for this project.
Okay. We'll have this as Exhibit E.
And the second is an October 30, 2020, update to that report, also prepared by Boobaris Traffic Associates, in which he updated the report based on the reduced project of 80 units.
Okay.
The next two that I'm going to hand out do not need to be marked as exhibits. They're excerpts from the plan that I just introduced into the record, as well as a comment response from Yenick River Consultants to some of the testimony that was heard at the February 1, 2024, public hearing.
Now, as indicated at the prior public hearing, and based on meetings between the applicant and staff, we had incorporated a two-foot landscape berm along the frontage of the project around, along North Bridebrook Road to provide some additional screening. We testified to that at the last hearing, but it was not graphically portrayed on the plan. It has been added in the February 6 revision. So you can see the two-foot landscape berm, the original white pines that were part of the 2020 approval, and then the infill with the arbovites. And as the comment response letter indicates, the arbovites are a variety that are not susceptible to deer carnage. The second item that we've added is, at the southwest of the intersection of the access drive to the project with North Bridebrook Road, we have added a pad and bench for schoolchildren waiting for school bus in that location. My personal opinion is that that's overkill because as I drive around southeastern Connecticut, I don't see anyone waiting in buses anymore. The road we live in, they're waiting in a parent's car until the bus arrives, and the parent escorts them to the bus, but the request was made, we've incorporated. We've also incorporated a playground area located to the south of Building I in the back of the project, and also a natural trail both from the parking area and the playground area that will lead to the passive and active recreation area. So those are the amenities that have been added from the February 1 meeting in response to testimony that we heard at the public hearing. We also recognized a request that the planting vernacular for the project incorporate more pollinators. So... So, as you can see in Item 3 of the comment response letter, native trees, 150-plus, have been added, including service berry, red columbine, butterfly milkweed, black-eyed sues, and sweet goldenrod, all pollinators, as well as some plantings that have been added along the north and the west side of the stormwater treatment system. And the plantings that have been incorporated, both for aesthetic purposes and to incorporate pollinators, and as Mr. Hanfield indicates, the 2004 Stormwater Quality Manual does not recommend fencing that was brought up at the last public hearing, if the slopes are three to one or more gentle, and the slopes along the south and east side of the basin are graded at three to one, and along the north and west side are graded at four to one. So, the grading itself does not create a hazard, does not require fencing. Aesthetically, it's more pleasing to incorporate the plantings, which not only provide the vegetative benefits in incorporating polymers into the design, but also make it more difficult for someone to access the stormwater treatment area.
The response letter also indicates how the initial comments, both from Ben North and Bill Shear, have been addressed in the revised plans and in the revised operation narrative. And as you can see from the letter that was read into the record this evening, both of your municipal consultants indicate that all of their concerns have been addressed. With respect to the stormwater maintenance plan, you had a letter from Mr. Trinkhaus submitted into the record this evening. I'm going to have Mr. Hanfield address the particulars of that report. But before I do so, I want to make a couple of points. First, the stormwater management system for this project was designed in accordance with the 2004 Stormwater Quality Manual for 108 units, which was the original formulation of this project. As a result of the denial of a permit to conduct regulated activities by your municipal wetlands agency, that project was downscaled from 108 units to 80 units, which was approved by this commission. However, when it was downscaled, the sizing of the stormwater quality and stormwater management facilities in the project was not changed. So they were oversized, and it was approved by this commission. Now, with that being said, as Mr. Trinkhaus points out, the original design called for the installation of underground detention structures. During the supply chain issues from the COVID pandemic, those structures were not available, and the design modification that incorporated the two sediment forbays and the retainer basin to accomplish the same purpose as the mechanical structures that were originally specified was submitted to and approved by the town engineer. So our position is, that's off the table. That's part of this project. It's substantially constructed at this point, although it's not vegetated. The second point I'll make is that you have a town engineer. The design was submitted to the town engineer, not just in the last couple of weeks, but going back to 2019, when the original project was formulated. This is the second town engineer that you've had review this project. They have been integrally involved in the review and approval of the design of these stormwater treatment facilities. And as evidenced by the rec, the letter that was read into the record this evening, in Mr. Shear's professional opinion, these structures comply with the requirements of the 2004 Stormwater Quality Manual. The third point I'd like to make is, even if everything in Mr. Trinkhaus's report is accurate, which I will submit it is not, that is not justification to deny this application on the basis of stormwater management. The Connecticut Supreme Court has weighed in on this issue in the case of Christian Activities Council Congregation versus Town Council, 249 Connecticut, 566. We then stated our disagreement with the zoning commission's contention that it was entitled to reject this plaintiff's application based on the mere possibility that the zone change would harm the watershed property. The commission was required to show a reasonable basis in the record for concluding that its decision was necessary to protect substantial public interests. The record, therefore, must contain evidence concerning the potential harm, not potential design defects, but potential harm that would result if the zone were changed, and concerning the probability, not possibility, but a probability, that such harm, in fact, would occur. After reviewing the evidence in the record, we then concluded that there is nothing in the record that supports anything but a mere possibility that the requested zone change would harm the environment. The record contains no evidence quantifying the potential level of harm to the watershed property, or estimating the probability that the harm would occur if the zone change were granted. And that is exactly appropriate to the Trinkhaus letter. He points out, in his opinion, a number of inconsistencies between the design of this project with the Stormwater Quality Manual, but nowhere does he opine, in his professional opinion, that harm will occur to the watershed, or that there is anything more than a mere So with that being said, I'd just like to go back and remind the commission of the four prongs of consideration of a municipal zoning commission in an affordable housing For each reason of denial, the commission, the land use agency, has the burden to prove that, number one, sufficient evidence exists in the record to support that reason for denial. I would submit that there is none. Second, that the decision is necessary to protect substantial public interests in health, safety, or other matters which the commission may legally consider. I will submit that under 8-2, which is the enabling legislation that enables municipal regulation of zoning in the state of Connecticut, that groundwater protection is an enumerated consideration for a municipal zoning commission. However, wetlands and watercourses are not. Those are within the jurisdiction of the municipal wetlands agency. As indicated at the February 1 public hearing, your municipal wetlands agency has entered into a stipulation to judgment that was entered as a judgment of the Superior Court approving this design. The third consideration is that such public interests clearly outweigh the need for affordable housing. And finally, that such public interests cannot be protected by reasonable changes to the affordable housing development. I would submit to you that this application satisfies the permitting requirements contained in 830G. It is a modification. 80 units have already been considered. So when you're considering this application, you're considering, in light of these parameters that I've just read, the effect, if any, that the additional 20 units are going to have. You're not reviewing the original approval. You do not have the right to re-engineer the original approval. You are considering the impacts of the additional 20 units only, based on those parameters. So with that being said, I'd like to specifically have Mr. Hanfield address the particular items that were raised in the Hanfield, I'm sorry, in the Trinkhaus report.
We'll have questions after he finishes.
It's not a question. It's just the Trinkus, the Trinkhaus letter. Can I see the letter?
I want to just follow along.
It's not in my packet.
I don't have either.
There you go.
All right. Good evening. For the record, my name is Brandon Hanfield, professional engineer licensed in the state of Connecticut with Yantick River Consultants located in Lebanon, Connecticut. As Attorney Heller introduced, I did receive Mr. Trinkhaus's letter, and I did have an opportunity to review it. A number of the items I do not agree with, in my professional opinion, and I'll go through a few of them, just to make sure the context of the 2004 Stormwater Quality Manual is fully understood by everyone. It is not a regulation that we have to follow. It is guidance documents that we use, and it augments our professional judgment. I used my professional judgment in the design of this system in accordance with that manual. I incorporate elements that I have seen be successful over 25 years working in this business, and I will go through and enumerate a few of those for you right now. Okay, there's a number of them, so I apologize for the length. But the first one has to do with adding additional units in the substantial increase in impervious surface. I will submit that my stormwater management design submitted to the town is part of this record, considered that increase in impervious surface, and accounted for in the design of that detention basin, and basically backchecked it to the way it was originally designed. I'll also submit that the impervious surfaces associated with 100 units are less than the impervious surface that was included in the original design. So, A, the impervious surfaces were accounted for, and B, the treatment that is provided on the plans provides treatment for all surfaces within the development footprint. Number two, regard to a hybrid system with aspects of bioretention as well as standard detention. And I believe it goes into the combination of these two approaches will cause premature functionality issues with the bioretention aspect of the basin. And then goes on to say that multiple treatment systems in series is an acceptable approach, and is commonly known as a treatment train. I do agree with the treatment train aspect that a number of items in series would be considered a treatment train, and that's exactly what we're going for here. I do take issue that the way that it's designed will result in premature functionality issues. So the way the system works, it goes in, excuse me, goes into sediment forbays first. That is to really get the first flush of stormwater through. The intent of a sediment forbay is to take out the larger sediments that are within the stormwater that comes off that first flush. It's also intended to filter out floatables, debris, things that we'd find in our curb lines, leaf debris, stick matter, garbage that somebody might have dropped out of their car. So the sediment forbay itself is not intended to remove all of the sediments or pollutants within the system. It then goes through a filter barrier into a secondary containment system. That secondary containment system is in itself another sediment forbay. This forbay is larger, longer, intended to increase residence time and allow water to sit there for a longer period of time where finer sediments and materials can fall out before it filters through to the filter bed. And that last system, the filter bed itself, encourages water to pool up and stand below any low-level orifice so that it can infiltrate through the ground slowly, through vegetated matter, into the sands and gravels that we witnessed below this basin. On top of that, we provide three feet of separation between the bottom of our system and the seasonally high groundwater that was witnessed in our test pits. All of that combined provides a complete treatment train that removes the pollutants that are within the stormwater and fully retains and treats the water quality volume and the water quality flow. That is what we state on the record, and that's what I state in my plan, and I will defend that with my professional engineering judgment. Number three. I will just go to number four, because number three kind of defers to number four. But I will say that I respectfully disagree with the statement that the forbays will not be effective at trapping and retention of sediments. And I'll say, I'll go on to why now. Number four, I'll skip right to the depth of the forbays are only two feet, not the four to six feet required by the 2004 manual. Before going on to the rest of it, I'll respond to that one. It's misleading for Mr. Trinkhaus to state that the 2004 manual requires a depth of four to six feet. The manual simply recommends that the forbay be of adequate depth to prevent resuspension of collected sediments during the design storm, often being four to six feet. So it does not require anything. It relies on our professional judgment, based on our experience, to design a system that will not resuspend the sediments and solids and floatables that come out in that first flush. That is exactly what we do. The second part was, each sediment forbay is separated from the water quality retainer cell by a gravel filter berm. A gravel filter berm is very permeable and will allow turbid runoff to pass through from the forbay, which defeats the purpose of a forbay. Additionally, due to shallow depth, any sediment might settle out in the forbay will easily be resuspended by subsequent storm events and carried into other parts of the basin. Again, this defeats the purpose of a forbay. I will respond that, yes, indeed, I do design gravel filter berms, which are fully intended to be permeable between my sediment forbays. The reason for that is, again, my experience in applying this measure to not only construction sites, but also pond dredging, where I can actually witness the multiple cells of filtration as they pass through these permeable filter berms. In this case, the intent of a sediment forbay, again, is to remove the larger sediments, floatables, and debris from the stormwater, not to remove all suspended sediments. So there will be fine material that basically can pass through. That's called turbidity. In this case, we're trying to remove sediment. The recommended guidance in the 2004 manual is to remove what would be equivalent to a medium sand. It's what you'd find on a beach. It's physical, you could touch it, you can roll it in your fingers. That's what we're trying to get out in that first flush. That's what these filters do. They allow water to, in a laminar flow, without velocity or much velocity, pass through this filter berm, be collected by that filter berm, it will stack up a little bit. But again, we don't want high velocities. It will fall out, and then it will go into the secondary retainer cell, which, again, is another sediment forbay with double the capacity. So I will submit for the record that the intent of a sediment forbay is defined in the 2004 manual, is to remove those larger sediments, not to remove turbidity out of water, not to remove all sediment, but to remove those larger sediments before it gets to the next cells. That's exactly what we do. I will also submit that the depth of it, in my experience, a four to six foot depth is harder to maintain, accomplishes nothing greater than providing volume that you can't see. When it's shallow, it's there, and we can maintain it. The last part, let's go to number five here. The applicant states at the February 1 meeting that the retainer cell will contain 3,000 cubic feet of storage. There is no such component found in the 2004 manual, and not been shown how pollutants will be reduced. I will agree that the word retainer cell does not appear in the 2004 Stormwater Quality Manual. It is what I try to best define what that secondary cell is. Quite often, they don't have anywhere in the manual where they have two sediment forbays in series. Again, in my experience, having that second cell after I took out the larger sediments is a good idea. And in that second cell, I'm vegetating it with conservation seed mix that provides the filtration that's clearly recommended in the 2004 DEP Water Quality Manual. And I will read, quote unquote, what the 2004 manual says for, let's see here. "Second cell will be planted with conservation seed mix, which will provide flow through fine, dense, herbaceous plants, which is a clear factor that promotes removal of most stormwater pollutants." It's listed right in their guidance. There's four items, and one of the items is, "Flow through fine, dense, herbaceous plants treats most stormwater pollutants." It's exactly what we're doing in the retainer cell, is taking out the larger sediments, allowing the finer sediments to get into a secondary container, and flow through -- through fine sediments, and there will also be the opportunity for infiltration in that bed into those sands and gravels. Number six, stated by the applicant that the remainder of the water quality volume was provided for in the filter bed. No calculations have been provided. And I did state for the record that it, the calculations state that it can treat 250% of the water quality flow. I will stand behind that. Here's why. Calculations A were submitted in my stormwater management report and are included in the record copy. I will also agree that the third chamber in our treatment train is the filter bed and the pooling that will occur on it in itself. So, after the runoff passes through my two sediment four bays or sediment four bay and retainer cell, it filters through a filter berm into a very large, flat filter bed. It is completely flat. There's no slope to it. It's constructed of an engineered soil consisting of topsoil and sand. And the outlet is depressed below my low-level orifice. So, any water that enters it can't leave, other than going down through the ground or through the grasses that we plant on it. Let's see here. So, again, we plant it with conservation mix. It's passing through of fine, dense, herbaceous plants, providing treatment. We provide a natural soil surface that were created through an engineered mix consisting of sand and topsoil placed directly on top of sands and gravels that are three feet above groundwater. The filtration through that media also provides treatment. We have a fine to medium layer of soil that contains carbon that will filter our storm water runoff after it goes through the plants, after it goes through our filter beds. And then we have three feet of naturally occurring suitable sands and gravels with a hydraulic soil group of A that will receive and further treat it before it can get to even the seasonally high groundwater. So, seasonally high groundwater in sand and gravels can go up four, five feet, up and down. Where we saw it was eight and a half to nine and a half feet below ground. We have three feet in the wet season, which would be spring or apparently all of 2024. So, we have separation. We have filter. We have the plants. We're incorporating all the measures that we're asked to incorporate into a stormwater management plan. Let's see here. Number seven, I'll be brief. Mr. Trinkhaus states that the manual requires that a water quality volume be captured and treated, and I will respectfully disagree. Again, it's misleading to state that the 2004 manual requires that a water quality be captured and treated. The manual states the water quality volume is the volume of storm water runoff from any given storm that should be captured and treated to remove a majority of storm water pollutants on an average annual basis. So, it's not requiring that we do anything. It's recommending that we capture the total pollutants on an average annual basis, recognizing there are periods of the year where the system will not perform as well, winter. Let's see here. According to the test pits in the basin, sand and gravel are encountered at depths of 27 to 36 inches, putting our basin approximately five feet into grade. I agree. And then he goes on to state that some infiltration will likely occur through the bottom of the four bays. I also agree with that. Until the sediment builds up and clogs the gravel surface, it will decrease in infiltrative capacity over time, and I will address that with our operations and maintenance and inspection requirements that were submitted for the record in a bit. The next part, he goes into the no calculations. Let's see here. Does not provide for reduction of non-point source pollutant loads, including a number of items. Again, I respectfully disagree. I've described it in my report, and I've described it to you, that we are retaining the water quality volume below our low-level orifice. So, and that's in multiple chambers that are filtered as they go. That water is intended to go down through a filter media, through a separation, before it hits the groundwater. That is not a point discharge. That is called infiltration. I will say this. The media I designed for this plan is intended to slow infiltration down. Upfront, the sands and gravels have a very high hydraulic conductivity or infiltrative capacity. They can take a lot of storm water very fast. I don't want it to go that fast. So, this medium here with the topsoil and the sand mixed together with the vegetation is intended to slow it down so that it sits there longer, up to three days. So, we have more time, more residence time for those floatables to come out, for the sediments to drop out, for the turbidity to clear up, for the plants to absorb the water, for the sun to evaporatranspare what's in there, and for it to filter through very slowly and all those sediments to come out. That is the intent of the plan, and that's how I want it, and that's how I've seen it succeed. I could have just put sand and stone down, and it would have disappeared. But that wouldn't have been treatment. That would have just been straight infiltration. I want time, and that is a third point of the 2004 Water Quality Manual, is extending the time that that water is within the treatment train so that it can perform. We don't want it to go away. It has to be visible. It has to be there. We have to see it. So, just to reiterate, the four items is actually a fifth in the 2023 manual. Five items, clear factors that promote removal of most storm water pollutants, increasing hydraulic residence time, low turbulence, that's why we're laminarily allowing water to pass through our berms and not fall over and down, fine, dense, herbaceous plants, medium, fine textured soil. So, there's four. Sorry, I just summarized. All of these are incorporated into my design. Again, number nine is no pollutant loading analysis has been provided. I think it's clear through 25 years' experience that this system, with all of the standard measures that we're incorporating, belts and suspenders, meets the 2004 Water Quality Manual. We can do all the calculations we need. I submitted for the record the water quality volume and the water quality flow. I show that we're retaining it, which means it can't leave. And I show all of the measures that we're incorporating that standard engineering practices say treats storm water. I'm not a huge proponent of engineered methods, hydrodynamic separators. They're all great. Hard to maintain, very pricey. In this case, natural measures are better, and if we have the space and we have the good soils, we're going to use them, and that's what we did. Number 10 points out the cross-section of the filter bed and rain gardens, that there's a underdrain under them. And I'll submit that that underdrain applies to only the rain gardens themselves. So, there are a number of rain gardens on the top of the site that are part of this plan. Those, excuse me, those rain gardens are not built in good sands and gravels. So, under those rain gardens, we're putting in an engineered soil, and under it, you pitch the soil to a pea-stone underdrain that can enter into our, into our collection system. So, we're promoting infiltration, but we acknowledge the soils up there aren't great. The filter bed does not have an underdrain. Sands and gravels, we want the water to keep going down. So, that detail only applies to rain gardens, not the filter bed. And that is something I certainly could have clarified with Mr. Number 11 deals with the soil media itself and the fact that the topsoil will have more clay than is recommended in the DEP manual. There's a reference to 2% clay content. I could only find and only familiar with a 5% maximum clay content in topsoil, but the fact is that soil itself has to be approved by the design engineer in a material specification submittal, which is required on your plans. So, when that material is made, I approve it, and I make sure it meets the intent of my design. I do not want topsoil that you pick up and it's like a ball of cake, where you break it apart and you can see the veins. I want sandy, low-my topsoil that would be mixed with straight sand. There's a component of the topsoil that has lots of sand in it. You pick the right topsoil. It also has to have enough organic matter to support the seed mix we're proposing. So, again, I need to approve the material submittal. I would not approve a topsoil that has the amount of clay content that's referenced in this letter. Number 12, he's correct. I have an error on my plan in terms of the elevation on the detail, but I think the grading and drainage plan is pretty clear, and I certainly can fix that detail for structural purposes, but there's no impact on the design of the system. And then number 13 goes into the elevations of the storm water within the basin, and I think this is getting to one of the first components, which is the combination of treatment and attenuation within one area. And what's being implied is that when the big storm comes, water can't pile up and inundate our treatment areas. Every section in the 2004, and when I say section, I mean, they give you standard, typical details. I believe it's section 11. Every one of the basin details shows a sediment four bay, another feature, possibly a berm, filter berm, possibly vegetation, a wet pool, extended wet pool, dry pool, an outlet structure berm, and it shows varying levels of water. In all of them, the flood control water elevation is above every element of that system. It's very common to have sediment four bays, retainer cells, filter beds, within the limits of a detention basin that also provides flood control. It would take up an enormous amount of space for us to have to separate them and also deal with elevation issues. We don't want to go too deep. We have to provide separation. In those cases, you look at all of the elements of the site design. So, in this case, I do agree during a one-year storm, there'll be 15 inches of water above the bed. It'll be there for about six, seven hours. That happens, a one-year storm has 100% chance of happening every year. That'll happen once a year, probably more. Two-year storm, 50% chance of happening in any given year. You'll have about two feet of water, probably about seven or eight hours. It's a very temporary bell. The way storm water works, it starts flat, goes up, creates a bell, goes back down. All our pining occurs here, and then we meter it out slowly. So, there's a time when the water will be up two feet, but it's very temporary. It also occurs infrequently. As we get to the bigger storms, when you start to introduce real loads onto a soil, I'll use the 25-year. We would have to get 6.3 inches of rain in a 24-hour period. It would result in 3.6 feet on our filter bed. There's a 4% chance of that happening in any given year. That's why I call it a 25-year storm. Say it happens once every 25 years, very likely. We are inspecting this thing twice a year, making sure the vegetation is greater than 75%, making sure the inlets are stable, making sure the filter berms are stable, making sure that it drains in the 72 hours I spoke about earlier. So, if it doesn't drain in 72 hours, we know we have to look and aerate and possibly reseed our filter bed. And that's why we have an operations and maintenance manual, is to make sure those things happen. When it comes to compaction, it's such a temporary thing that happens so infrequently, it's highly unlikely it will cause a premature failure of this system. This is, the treatment system is designed for 98% of the storms you're going to see, every week, half inch, quarter inch, three-quarters of an inch. That water stays in that basin, and it gets fully treated. The big storms come through. The way it's designed is to go through without high velocities. It will not disturb the medium sand sediments. It will go through the vegetation. It will not disturb what's caught in that vegetation. It will pile up. I guess it will impound, and the water surface elevation will slowly meter out into the system and not be an increase over existing conditions. I think that addresses 13 and 14. The last thing I'll say is the most important part of this stormwater management system that was not discussed is the operation and maintenance manual. Most of the pollutants that occur within any development are a result of how we use it. And this manual submitted provides guidelines to the owner, whether it's the current or future, that shows how this development should be operated and what should be looked for. That includes trash, winter, snow plowing, insulting. It includes leaf pickup, landscaping, dealing with natural vegetation, trash pickup. All of those things are, basically contribute to the pollutants that we see. I will also submit that a residential development is a relatively moderate to low-impact development. It is not an industry. It is not a commercial. It is not an automobile repair station. People come home from work. They park their cars. They enjoy their home. They go back to work. On the weekends, they can enjoy their maintenance. We provide them. They also don't like it to look bad. So, there's often not a huge trash content. There's not a lot of litter. It's typically well landscaped and upkept, and we're trying to minimize those things. On top of that, this report has a comprehensive inspection requirements. In the back of the manual, I provide the inspection, a key map of all of the facilities around the site and how they're, when and how there's to be inspected, and I provide checklists on that. And then we've submitted for the record that that report will be prepared by the Design Engineer of Record, which is me, and submitted to the town by November 1st of each year so that you can see it's being performed properly. So, I think that covers everything in the letter, and happy to answer any questions that might come up.
Attorney Heller, do you have anything else to say at this point?
No, that concludes our presentation. Obviously, we may have rebuttal.
Okay. Do we have, at this point, does the commission have any questions for either of the presenters?
I have just one, and this is for anyone who might know the answer. Does anyone know if Mr. Trinkhaus visited the site?
I can address that.
Okay, fair enough. That's all.
Did you want to tell us, or?
I have a few small.
Sure.
I was confused by one comment you made about there was a downscaling to 80 from 108.
Correct.
But then I kind of lost the plot, then sort of suggested, at least I inferred. But it wasn't really downsized. So, I was just confused by the, what actually occurred. Can you just restate?
Sure. And I went over that at the February 1 hearing. But the original formulation of the project was 108 units. That formulation required activities in the upland review area. The application to the wetland agency was denied. That was appealed to the Superior Court. We then came back to this commission with an 80-unit formulation of the project that was ultimately approved. That required no permit from the wetland agency. So, it was approvable by your commission without any input from the wetland agency. After the original approval, two things occurred. The first was that we petitioned your water and sewer commission for a revision of the sewer shed and sewer avoidance line that sort of cut through the project in this area right here in the north central portion of the property. And we petitioned the water and sewer commission to revise that sewer shed boundary to the property's north-avoidance property line. That was approved. As a result of that approval, the project engineer had the ability to redesign the project to fit the 100 and, the 100 units that are before you this evening within the parameters of a review that would be approvable by the wetland commission, which it ultimately was in the stipulated judgment. So, that's how we moved from 108 to 80, back to 100.
Okay, thank you. While you're there, if I can ask, with respect to the berm, when I was out looking at the site, one of the things I noticed.
The berm in front of the?
The berm in front. Can I ask you about that now?
Sure.
Yeah, so, which is a constructive thing, I think, but one of the things that I noticed was, you know, the view from the road is lower than the, you know, the site slopes up there, and then you've got the view beyond.
Correct.
And so, my question that I was wondering when I was out there is, is how high up the slope is the berm? In other words, is the berm at the top of the slope or at the toe of the slope? If it's at the toe of the slope, then it wouldn't have as much screening effect to the driver viewing the site as if it was at the top of the slope. Am I making myself clear?
Yeah, oh, no, and I agree with that proposition. But again, the, both the white pines and the arbovites that have been specified are relatively fast-growing species. So, and again, remember, when you're in a car on the road, you're at about three and a half foot height. So, the visual that you get is So the visual that you get is not if you're back 200 feet. So the line of sight from that vehicle at three and a half feet to the top of those arbivites will shield the whole project relative, I'm not going to say it's going to be in year one, but in a couple of years, they will grow up enough that it's going to shield the view from the motoring public.
So, okay, but you know, so am I right that the berm, are we, am I correct to infer the berm is at the bottom of the slope?
I believe that it is, but that's a better question for Brandon.
Okay. That's fine.
Yeah, I believe.
It looks like it on the map.
There is some existing vegetation.
That side as well.
We're trying to preserve.
Yeah, yeah. So it's really supplemental to what's there already?
Okay. Then I had one for him.
Okay.
Not that complicated. One is, you know, the effectiveness of the, the dispute appears to be about the effectiveness of the pollution prevention or removal process, right? And so I'm wondering, is there some form of monitoring of the discharge? Unfortunately, it would have to be at the groundwater level because that's kind of what we're talking about. I'm familiar with some of those discharge monitoring studies that are usually, you know, for the surface discharge. But is there a technology that can monitor this? In the end, that'd be one of the ways to get at whether, how well things are working, you know? Given the sensitivity of the site and existing exceedance already, these are nonattainment conditions already. So I'm just curious if that's a possibility, technically speaking. I don't mean whether you're proposing it or would do it, I'm just asking.
It's certainly been done in, I believe, right in this town. Your hole-in-the-wall parking lot has a number of stormwater teaching areas that were implemented by your town engineer. There's pervious pavement, there's a number of cells that are interconnected by various-sized berms, there's an open-top hydrodynamic separator that you actually could see in and see the reaction of rainfall. The hard part about stormwater is you've got to be there when it's raining to see it work. So, and I believe Mr. Shear had at the time he installed it, monitoring capabilities. They have since, I believe, stopped working. They're not a super reliable thing, and automating treatment requires a baseline and a finish line. So you've got to get the water in, you've got to get the water out. It's not the easiest thing to do. Again, I can only rely on the monitored success of the projects and the fact that if we are putting it through vegetation in the ground, it's exactly what we want to do. Low-impact design has a very similar approach where we want impervious surfaces to get onto vegetation. It is the best treater. The second thing is to make sure your site is properly used. We do those two things, and we continue to inspect and monitor it and upgrade it over time based on the inspections that are performed. It will be in accordance with the manual and provide the treatment that we're looking for.
Okay, and last subject is, so, you know, I'm generally familiar with these various studies that do some of this discharge monitoring, and they show depending on the technology used and the pollutant measured, somewhere between 60 and 85%, you know, effectiveness in removal. And you may correct me if I'm wrong, but sort of in that ballpark. So these are not perfect things, but I'm not sure we know how to be perfect in this field yet, but they don't seem to be. One of the phosphorus and nitrogen seems to be a little tougher, and that, I think, is associated with fecal coliform and the eutrophication or, you know, algae bloom problem that we tend to see around here. And one of the sources for that above the treatment on the site is pet waste, right? And it turns out, there's an incredible, maybe, well, one of my questions is, I'm assuming that pets will be allowed in this project, correct me if I'm wrong. But apparently, as many as half of all the apartments these days in America have dogs in them, and people love their dogs, and, you know, that's great. But they leave a lot of pet waste on the site. So one of the ways that the project in Gateway has addressed this is they provide pet sanitation stations, you know? And so that we can get, we can encourage the residents to collect it and throw it away properly before it finds its way down to your system, which will mostly clean it, but maybe not completely clean it. So I'm just wondering if you've considered installing, you know, a handful of those on the site to help with, you know? Sure.
Well, I also want to interject, I'm familiar with the operations of other apartments, multifamily apartments in the area. One other measure that is highly recommended is, most big complexes that allow dogs now do DNA testing of the dog you bring to the development. And shocking enough, I was walking the site not too long ago, and I walked by a very large pile of not, things that shouldn't be left near a sidewalk, and the maintenance guy radioed into the office and said, "We have a pile by building whatever, come get it." And they test it, and it's $350 fine. And you want to talk about teeth? That is, to me, putting the responsibility on the resident. So yes, you provide in the bags, yes, you provide the receptacles, yes, you empty it, but end of the day, they have to have an incentive to do it, not just being a good dog-walking friendly person. So that is something I've seen be successful, and I sure wouldn't want to pay $350 not to bend over, so I think that can be incorporated.
Yeah, okay, I'm sorry, one last thing I forgot to ask about. Is there going to, are we talking about a play structure on the pad? Is that what you imply?
Yes, so what I specified was the safety surface itself. So in this case, certified IPEMA wood mulch that comes from Connecticut Wood Products, I have it under my own playground for my daughter. The depth has to be determined by the size of the structure and what ages use it and how high they can fall. But end of the day, the playground itself, the facilities, I think, will be part of the zoning. So yes, there will be a playground structure on it.
Thank you, thank you. That's great to hear.
Does the commission have any more questions?
Go ahead. Can I make a comment? Thank you for hearing us with items 1 through 4 about the detention basin fencing. I believe you said that the basin is 3 and 1/2 to 4 feet deep. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so, I'm 4 feet 10, that means I get to drown. So my question is, who's liable if a child falls in and drowns?
That would have to go back to the attorney. I will answer the question about the depth.
Just curious.
So the depth of water under a 100-year storm event is, I believe, 3 point, sorry, 4.6 feet. So we got 8 inches of rainfall in a 24-hour period, the depth of water in the detention basins is 4.6 feet, still not to the berm, and it will dissipate in less than 24 hours.
I'm arguing with your, and we all know global warming is happening, I mean, just a couple weeks ago, we had a 7-inch storm.
Yep.
I just want to know that if somebody's kid drowns in there, the town of East Lime is not on the hook for it because our job is to protect our residents.
Yeah, clearly the town is not. And look, we have water bodies all over the place that aren't fenced. And what's important here is that you're in compliance with the recommendation of the Stormwater Quality Manual, so that's an ascertainable standard. And the standard is, if it's steeper than 3 to 1, then it should be protected. And there's no portion of the embankments to this basin that is steeper than 3 to 1.
Okay.
If the commission has no questions, we can move to the public. To start with, is there anyone here to speak in favor of the project? Anyone here to speak against the project? Come on up.
Michelle Maitland, 6 Acorn Drive. I work for the Town of Groton Public Works Department as a project manager, and part of my job is environmental compliance tracking, and a good part deals with something called the MS-4, which is the Deep Stormwater Permit. That's the municipal separate storm sewer system permit. My role is administrative, so I am not a scientist or an engineer, though I do have a UConn grad certificate in sustainable project management, and now five years into my job, a good understanding of the permit. As I increased my knowledge, my curiosity was piqued regarding East Lime processes. I work with the planning department and public works, so it's just, you know, made me more interested and follow it a little bit more closely. But I don't stay on top of East Lime planning and zoning. It's a lot. I think you all know that. But after the last zoning meeting was flagged online to me, I went and looked and I recognized some of the content of the questions. And so you may wonder about this thing, the report, that Mr. Trinkhaus's report. And so I just took it upon myself to contact, contract with Mr. Trinkus, who is a specialist stormwater engineer, recognized expert, and does, speaks at national conferences and that kind of thing. And I met him through my work, and so I took it upon myself to contract with him, just really kind of as much as for my own learning, as I did as a service to the town, the way that I saw it, and just kind of as an experiment. No disrespect was meant to you or the engineering firm. I did not know what to expect, and honestly, I thought Mr. Trinkus might tell me that because this was submitted before March, when the new deep guidelines come into effect, that it would be grandfathered in, and so I was prepared to be disappointed. But frankly, I was disappointed to learn that he judged the existing design to be insufficient, and even apart from the expansion and to the 2004 standards. I support and work alongside engineers and have come to appreciate the massive complexity of stormwater concerns. I couldn't even, like, we already spent a long time on this. Like, all the various things, it's extremely complex. And town engineers, I feel terribly, I have a great sympathy for them. They are dealing with the engineering of the whole town. They're mostly understaffed, they, there's not, it's a highly specialized area. But this is increasingly important to all of us. And so that, to me, means that zoning members, town employees, industry and individual residents need to do better. Bridebrook, as has been referenced, and as I think you all know, is already an impaired waterway, which is critical to native alewife, and supporting that population, that deep has put a lot of money into trying to restore the alewife population, is important to a bunch of other animals and the whole ecosystem. I am not a lawyer, so, but I think that we would, to address your point, sir, I think we would all agree that, and I understand it's the world we live in, legally and government and all that, but that to have to prove quantifying the possible harm and the probability of that harm, is it not a reasonable standard? Okay, but that's the world we live in. But I just wanted to point that out. I can't counter these replies, but I just did this as an experiment, and I only had a tiny budget. So to your point, Mr. Foley, Mr. Trinkus did not visit the site because I did not pay for him to do that. I told him the budget I had, and he said he would come down. He spent some time here and with in-town hall reviewing all the filings, and I believe he spoke with Mr. Mulholland, and so that was the report that was delivered, so. Sorry, I don't have deeper pockets to fund my little experiments. My only stake in this, other than that, is the appreciation for our ecosystem, but also to hopefully drive better processes for our town. And I hope we can all agree that there's a benefit to this, and maybe some of you learned something about stormwater or were stimulated and will go on to look more. There is an educational component to the MS-4 permit and a public engagement. The town has obligations under the MS-4. That's separate than the Deep Stormwater Guidance Document that's been referenced. The town has an MS-4 mandate. Coincidentally, today is the start of a 30-day public comment period, and all towns, or 120 towns in the state, are posting online today, as East Lime already did, their annual stormwater management report. So we, each town, I did it today for Groton, posts our progress and our goals, and I hope that you all, or some of you will go on and look at that and check it out and send in questions or comments to the Public Works Department. It's on the Public Works website, and I appreciate this opportunity to speak and to have sorry to eat up all that time. Thanks.
Thank you, thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak? Yes, sir.
Chris Haney, 124 North Bridebrook Road. I would like to say thank you for letting me speak. I know this almost didn't happen tonight, there was three that wanted to move on, and I'm glad you guys voted to come back. We have a major water issue on Bridebrook Road, major. I'm trying to be a good neighbor. When this started before, I stated that, build it right. The stormwater infiltration, when it rains, that thing is full to the top. You can see that brown thing up there, that water is darker than that, and it runs right over to Bride Lake, forms another pond, and that's running into the lake over there. The water that is not running into the lake is running down Bridebrook Road. That water crests all the way over the yellow line. If I leave my driveway going to my neighbors, I have to drive on the left-hand lane, all the way up till I get to the crest of the hill of the condos. I'm not an expert engineer. It's not working. I also made a comment on the beach bums. All of a sudden, the next day, engineer's there across the street, he's out walking around, looking at the area, just happens to be DEPs here now, in the streams, walking around. They've been down there quite a bit all of a sudden lately. Bridebrook Road has flooded three times in the last year. Last January, I believe April, and July, road was closed. This January, the road could have been closed again. The sergeant of the day was in front of my house taking photos, copies, I mean, photos and pictures, which he lives down the road as well. One thing that hasn't been brought up is on Bridebrook Road, we haven't had any frost in quite some time. There's so much water up there, we're going to be in trouble, especially the people on, I can't remember the road, down the road, Mr. Mulholland, you may.
Going down to 156?
Yes.
Yeah, I think it is.
Those people are going to be in some serious trouble when this happens. We are also, all of a sudden now, under the underpass on Bridebrook Road, all that water from Roxbury Road that used to flow down, like to Costco's, that's coming our way as What else I got here? Got a few other things. I think there needs to be more communication with DEP. I don't know if any of you guys even have talked to DEP? Have any of you guys even been to the site? You need to go down, you need to go down Bridebrook Road, head to 156, you can see where the water, the holding cell is. It's leaking right into Bridebrook Lake. You don't even have to get out and get wet, it's right there in front of you. There's major, major issues. Like I said, I'm not an engineer, it's not working. It's not working. Hasn't worked in quite some time. Trying to be a good neighbor, as I'm sitting here, I'm getting a little fumed up here. Also, you brought up the traffic. Did a traffic study. The traffic study, I believe, was done in November. Did the traffic study, the traffic study, I believe, was done in November. June, July, August, we all know that this town is crazy. You can't even get onto 156. I stated this last time. If you're the first car trying to get by the lime tavern onto that road, it takes you over 35 minutes to 45 minutes to even get on that road. Most people that are from this area, who go down through Chadwick, they have to take a right because they know they can get up there and go to Giant's Neck or get on the connector. Also, I want to say too, that they're going to be doing construction on the other side of this complex, where the water mostly all comes from, on the other side of the highway. I'm not sure if things are going to make things better or make things worse, but we have some major issues on Bridebrook Road, and I hope you're listening, I really do. I know some of you guys want to move on, do your thing, but I just want to say thank you for your time, and I hope you're listening. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here tonight? Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Kevin McGowan. I live at 33 Spinnaker Drive here in Niantic. Something that hasn't been brought up yet, I know they mentioned the traffic, the study they did with the traffic, and I guess there's a few things I want to have addressed. I'm just concerned about pedestrians. These people are moving into apartments only a half mile away from Bridebrook Recreation Area. How are they going to safely go from their apartments down to Bridebrook Recreation Area? You need to have something, maybe a separation with Jersey Barrier, with 10 feet inside the barrier for anybody with the woman jogging with their strollers, the babies in the strollers, bike riding, just people walking, so they're not, because kids, kids are funny and they'll just jolt out into the street if you don't pay attention. And kids like to run in tandem, and their friends will always go in tandem, then all of a sudden, there's cars coming. There shouldn't be, there should be a risk like that. You don't have to take all Bridebrook and go all the way down to the other end. I don't think a sidewalk's going to be the answer. That'd probably be very expensive. But just a Jersey Barrier, enough, like, 10 feet so those people don't be walking along with traffic, because it's very risky. Because the kids are going to want to go down there. People want to go to Rocky Neck, they know we don't want to drive down there. It's not that far to walk down to Rocky Neck. And if they're going to do that with the blue, the blown-up toys and all this, trying to get, and can't see what they're doing, and the cars going by, that's scary. So it'd just be a safety factor. And I think that I try to imagine how many people are going to be walking from there down to the rec area, down to the beach or whatever. Hopefully, they're not going to go in the slime tavern, and there'll be a little tipsy coming home too. But it's something you've got to think about. Because one of your one little cell phone, you know, drops it off for a minute, and you take out five people walking on the highway, going down to the rec area. So I think some thought needs to be put there. Because it's going to be, oh, my God, get these kids out of the road. What are you doing in the road? We're trying to drive here. So make it so they can't come out of the road. Just something to think about. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here tonight that would like to speak for, against, or just a neutral comment?
Can I make one more comment?
Sure, come back.
Chris Haney, 124 North Bridebrook Road. One other thing I wanted to say, the Public Works is advised what the problem is. They spend a lot of time, the last two weeks, the street sweeper was down there for straight two weeks cleaning that road. And they've been down there prior, cleaning that road from all the muck and the debris. So it's not catching something. Thank you.
Thank you. Attorney Heller, do you have any last comments?
Everyone done?
Yeah, I think so.
Just a couple. With respect to the stormwater system, it's under construction, it's not complete, but the outlet structure is in. It's been designed by a professional engineer, and if there's flooding occurring on Bridebrook Road, it's not occurring as a result of this development, because the stormwater design has been designed to attenuate the peak rate of runoff in every design storm event, from the one to the 100-year storm event. It's probably coming from the brook itself. And there is no interaction between this property and the brook, because when we came to you with the original formulation of this project for the 80 units, the design parameter that I specified to the engineer was, number one, not only do we not have any activity in the upland review area, which was 100 feet at that time, but we do not have any activity that is shedding direction of flow to Bridebrook. And that was incorporated into the design of this project. So if there is a flooding situation on North Bridebrook Road, it's not coming from this This is Judge Berger, who was the chief judge of the Land Use Court in Hartford that handled most of the affordable housing appeals in the state of Connecticut. And he stated, additionally, the plaintiff is not required to demonstrate a need for these units. The legislature has decided that issue when it adopted the Affordable Housing Appeals Act. If need is to be demonstrated, it is to be done by the commission under subsection C3, in which it must prove that certain public interests outweigh the need for affordable housing. Second, providing affordable housing does not just benefit an applicant, it benefits a town, a region, a state. This is a good project. 100 units will provide 30 units of affordable housing, good, decent, clean, affordable housing that these people otherwise could not afford but for the provisions of this act, which require municipalities to satisfy a public need. These are important issues. The mandate of the legislature is clear. We believe that we have complied with the requirements of the act, that there are no matters within the permitting jurisdiction of this commission on affordable housing application, health, safety, and other matters within the jurisdiction of the commission, where there is any sufficient evidence in the record to indicate that those concerns exist, never mind that they outweigh the public interest in affordable housing. So we would submit that the commission should approve the application as it has been revised through this hearing process. Thank you.
Thank you. If the commission doesn't have any more comments or questions, could I have a motion to close the hearing?
I make a motion to close the hearing.
Is there a second?
Yes.
All those in favor of closing the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those against closing the public hearing? Any abstentions? Mr. Pivo, I'm sorry, I didn't get your vote.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We were voting to close the public hearing.
I understand, okay. Yeah. Well, I have, I have a couple of quick questions before we do that. Can we?
We have a motion on the floor, so you'll have to vote one way or another.
I understand that, yes, that's true. Okay, I'll abstain.
Okay. Five ayes, one abstention. I suggest we take a five-minute break before we move on to the regular meeting. Thank you. We're going to call the meeting back to order. Continuing, Mr. Peck, would you like to rejoin us for the minutes, approval of the minutes?
Oh, I'm done.
For a minute.
Don't go far.
Did anyone have any corrections to the minutes this week?
I think.
Ms. Kalal?
I do.
Okay, go ahead.
On page 11, under 7-2, any business on the floor? I think Ms. Kalal and Mr. Peck are on the subcommittee, not only for the lighting, but for the CA zoning, is what I understood out of the meeting.
Okay. Any other corrections? No? Does someone want to make a motion to approve them with the amended correction?
Make a motion that we approve the minutes with the amendments.
I'll second it.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Okay, minutes are approved. Continuing, Mr. Peck, would you like to recuse yourself again? We can, we do have 65 days to make a decision, so we can discuss it tonight, we can vote tonight, we can continue it and discuss it and vote next meeting, whatever the commission members choose to do.
There's a lot here to absorb, but I'm not going to be ready to vote on it tonight.
Would someone like to make a motion to continue it, or you want to discuss it some more? Yeah.
Yeah, so, so we have two really, I think, well, two professional experts with very different opinions with respect to the groundwater pollutant issue. And so I don't know the answer to how to resolve, pick the winner or not. And so I'm wondering, one of the things I noticed was, for example, that the new letter from the town engineer didn't refer to this particular letter from Mr. Trinkus. And so I'm trying to figure out what's the process for reconciliation of their views or for, you know, third-party judging whose views are more correct or not. But, you know, it's a very important issue, and it's because of the sensitivity of the site, it's groundwater supply area and drinking water supply area, and we have to get it right. So, you know, if I don't, if I had to pick one over the other, my tendency, from an environmental management point of view, would be to avoid making a mistake that's an irreversibly irretrievable problem. But I don't want this to be a situation where we have a winner and we have a loser. It seems to me you should get the best minds you can together and let them talk it through and, you know, if necessary, make some adjustments if they agree that's necessary. So what I'm really wondering is, does anybody have any ideas, or might we have the town get these two together as mediated by the town engineer? So we end up with a recommendation from them. I understand after a hearing, we can still get staff reports as input.
Typically, you can get staff reports. You have the town engineer's comments, you have the applicant's engineer, and of course, you have Mr. Trinkus.
Trinkus, yeah.
His view. So you have those three in the record. We technically can't take new testimony because the public hearings closed, but with that said, staff such as myself can make a point of clarification typically, but I can't be introducing new evidence.
Correct.
And somebody would have to pay Mr. Trinkus if we wanted him to come out again, but we can certainly ask the town engineer to review his letter.
I think that's within our purview.
Yeah, I think it is. Yeah, I think that'd be wise, at least, and have him respond to it. I would like to have him respond to it as specifically as possible, just as, I'm sorry, your name is? Mr.?
Handfield.
Mr. Handfield.
Yeah.
Just as he did, point by point, as much as possible. If we could, you know, if he would do that, that'd be very most helpful.
Well, let me seek clarification, and if I can get that done, I will. But I want to make sure technically we're on legal sound ground.
It sounds like we may have a consensus to wait two weeks to discuss this.
Yes.
Okay, all right, we'll move on then. Okay. Under old business, I believe there's a subcommittee for outdoor lighting and, oh, yeah, Mr. Peck, are you still here? You can come back, yeah.
It's temporary discharge.
Welcome back. Any news on the subcommittee for outdoor lighting?
We confess, we have not been able to get together in a matter of time. We will.
And I assume that might be the same for the mixed CA zone?
Yes.
Yes, okay. And the affordable housing, again, Attorney Bleestell, I think he's putting the finishing touches on his handiwork, and he's hoping to be here in March to discuss that. New business we have coming up, application of Eric S. Parker Esquire for proposed text amendment to section 20.26 of the East Lime zoning regulations. And Mr. Mahalan, you're scheduling that?
I'll schedule that, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry?
What's that all about?
They're looking to amend 20.26, which addresses spatial distances for
Drive-through?
For drive-throughs for fast food restaurants.
Okay.
So we'll get to that at some point.
Gotcha.
Okay.
I just might add, I've got 35-day referrals to three reporting agencies, so it takes about 40 days to get that turned around, so we'll check the schedule and try to find a good slot for it.
May I ask a quick question?
Sure.
I'm curious why, this is the second time I've seen one of these, an application that we then don't discuss or anything like that, shows up as new business.
Because it's new business, it's typically accepted at the next regularly scheduled meeting of the zoning commission, which is this meeting, if an applicant submits it. So we list it as new business, then it gets scheduled, no discussion, because we're not conducting a public hearing yet. So we're not, we can't take any evidence or have a discussion without the applicant present, and running legal ads and creating that special, that the public hearing process.
Does this eat up by having it get on the agenda? Does it start some clock that?
Yes. It starts a legal clock that this commission is obligated to follow, 65 days of schedule, 35 days of due hearing.
From the date of
Submission.
Of the application?
Yeah.
Not this showing up on the agenda?
That's correct. It came in the office the other day, we're going to start the clock from that day.
I get it, okay.
And we track it at staff level, but for notice for you guys, that something's coming up, and it's new business and informational purposes.
Okay.
And then during the public hearing, you will hear the presentation on what they're asking and all the details.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
If anybody wants to discuss anything new tonight, we can take a vote if we want to discuss it. Does anyone have anything they'd like to make a motion to discuss tonight?
I'd like to return to some things we started talking about very briefly at the last meet, at the last meeting. And one of them is this business of asking the Board of Selectmen to amend the town ordinance to allow us to charge a fee.
If I may, I will interrupt you.
I think we have information.
I did look that up, because, and getting back to you, and you're absolutely correct, they'll have to pass the town ordinance to allow us to charge applicants for us to bring in consultants, so we can look at that further, and I can talk to the first selectman about that, and then probably bring in the town attorney to look at that.
Yeah, so then in that case?
If that's the wish of the commission.
Yeah, so in that case, how do we want to handle discussing it, putting on the agenda, discuss it, however we want to do that? Is it of the, is it the general sense of the commission that people don't want to talk about it at all? Want to talk about it, want to go ahead now and entertain a motion?
You can, I'd entertain a motion to put it on the agenda.
I don't mind talking about it, but I hate to start at 9:30 at night. I'd almost rather have a special meeting just to talk about stuff we need to talk over, without hearings and applications being in front of us.
I will add that you're going to be busy for the next six weeks. I've got a lot of things in the pipeline. March 7th, you have another affordable housing application, so it'll be starting to stack up. So there's a lot, we're in the spring push, and this is when you start to get amendments and projects and a variety and projects and a variety of things.
Yeah, so there's, yeah, so there's a predisposition, maybe, at least with Mr. Foley, that people do want to talk about that subject, and so then maybe, well, I do, and we do. So then maybe we should, the question is, should we have a special meeting for that? And there's another piece that I think is really important, and I don't know if anybody had a chance to look at any of the examples of site planning standards for multifamily housing that I circulated last time, but I think that's, you know, like with this project, this is, you know, a special case, ain't it? But I think we're well behind in terms of the modernization of our site planning standards. We don't very much have them for multifamily. Imagine it as being a part of, maybe it would be a part of site planning, or maybe it'd be part of the special use standards for multifamily. But that's something I think we really should discuss if we want to get quality projects, multifamily projects, and be able to, you know, be clear with designers before they submit applications what we're looking for. It doesn't have to be overly complicated, but it would say things like, hey, we do want a playground if you're going to have a certain number, you know, and we do want certain kind of things like that. So that would be another thing I'd like, so in other words, what I'm trying to say is that there, we could fill a special meeting with those two subjects and maybe one or two others if folks, in terms of the development of, you know, process-related and policy-related matters.
I would put it in a form of a motion.
Okay. So then I'd like to move that we schedule a special meeting to discuss site planning standards for multifamily housing and the request to the Board of Selectmen to amend the town ordinance to allow us to, on occasion, charge a fee at the cost of retaining outside consultancies.
Is there a second?
Would this be strictly for discussion, or would there be a public hearing segment to it?
I'm imagining this is discussion, and if people want to move forward, then we'll have to, I guess, post something for it.
Well, the process would be, if you have a discussion and you decide you want to craft the regulation, then either a subcommittee working with staff and putting some ideas together, and then coming back to the commission to sort of have a give-and-take and a discussion about what you want and what you want, a collective decision. Then that would, we would then schedule a public hearing, and there'd be referrals out to other agencies because it's a text amendment look to the zoning regs, schedule a public hearing, go through that process, then you'd have 65 days, 35 and 65 to complete that process.
That would be for the site plan stuff?
For the site plan stuff.
The other stuff would simply be, I think, a recommendation, a motion to recommend or request that the Board of Selectmen look at it, if I'm correct.
Yeah, after you guys have your discussion, if that's something you want to do, then typically what we would probably do is start looking at staff level of what's out there in terms of comparison, who's got this in, is there someplace else we can, we can cut and paste?
Yeah.
And then I would, at that point, have the chair, we'd need to talk to the first selectman and board of selectmen to put that request forward from this board and see where that goes, and then probably a review by town attorney.
We have a motion, did I hear a second?
Second.
Is there any more discussion on it?
I wondered if at the same time, or maybe I'm speaking out of turn here, but has an application been made for the certification of housing completion and moratorium on appeals? Is that something that the town is going to go forward with, or is that something that...
I believe we have to wait to hear from Attorney Bledsoe.
Okay. Just out of curiosity.
I'd like to get clear what we're voting on here. Is the motion to, at the next meeting, this board, right here, speaks about these two subjects?
I understood it to be a special meeting.
She's got that right.
When?
A special meeting, public meeting, not a subcommittee.
Well, all your meetings are public, but it wouldn't be a public hearing, it would just be a discussion as if you're having tonight.
All right.
At a special meeting.
I assumed it might be an additional meeting besides our bi-weekly meetings, since we're so booked up.
Yeah, that's why.
Okay, I guess, are we ready to vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Does someone want to make a motion on the date of this meeting?
I would ask, you let me look at the schedule.
Okay. That's fair.
I've got, and the reason being, I've got some slots. Tonight you didn't ask, so that's going to back my scheduling up. Not your problem, my problem. At the next meeting, where we have another applicant, so I'm trying to make sure we all have slots and you can get your work done and we can find slots for our applicants so you can process those and make decisions. Let me look at the calendar, I'll get with the chair, and then we'll send an email out. Does that work for everybody?
That works.
Okay.
Thank you.
Works for me.
Thank you.
I think we are, Mr. Mahollen, do you have anything else for us tonight?
There was a question on Aquifer at the last meeting, and I've been emailing with the DEP, particularly Kim Zapler, who is the senior analyst for our area, and I asked the question whether there was any provision in the enabling statutes on Aquifer to allow for referral of land use projects such as special permit developments, et cetera, to the local Aquifer agency or state authority.
You might want to move your microphone.
Sorry. I forget that.
Thank you.
In essence, and I can send this email out if everybody would like to see it, she's saying, "You're the Aquifer Protection Agency. As your staff, I look at the, all of these issues, and so it comes to you anyway as a zoning commission and as an Aquifer agency. If it's a regulated activity, you're going to see it, and if it's a prohibited activity, it's just never going to happen because there won't be any, any applications." So in essence, it's already codified. And then there was a second question about expanding the Aquifer and whether that can happen. It requires an application to the state. They had, they had, essentially, she states that you'd have to make application to the state, and I'll quote her last line, "Note, not one of the 80 municipalities have requested to extend the boundary in the 20 years of the Aquifer Protection Area Program implementation. The line is drawn in the sand and approved as such. So we, in order to expand it, we may have to do some drilling to establish the mapping Level A and B scientifically. Looks like a very difficult thing to do, and we'd have to have good reasons, and it hasn't been done by anybody. But this is available to anybody who would like to, like to read it, and I'm happy to share that. And I could send it out if anybody wants, or just email me if you're interested."
Okay.
Thank you, and I have nothing further, other than we're busy, as you know.
Wouldn't it be possible to just go back to our original boundaries, which had previously approved before it was decided to downsize it, as we already had an established Aquifer area?
Well, that was, that was established, I think, around '73, I think Dr. DeSanto, whom you recall...
Yes.
...had a lot to do with that, and it was based on soils at the time. When the state came along and mandated the Aquifer program, every town was required to drill, I think we spent a quarter million dollars drilling to scientifically define the Aquifer, there was allowed the mapping Level A and B that the water company was in charge of, and they still have some of those documents, as do I. And the Aquifer was established scientifically at that time. The state approved the mapping Level A and mapping Level B, and it was subsequently adopted as the Aquifer by the town. And so in the program, you have a lot of prohibited uses because you have the state statutes and you have the local Aquifer regulations. Obviously, you can't put an oil terminal over an Aquifer today, so those are prohibited. Such things as retail are not prohibited, residential, not prohibited, so they're allowed, they don't have to register, because there are certain activities that have to register, and that's when you typically have, let's say, a repair shop that's grandfathered, well, he may, he'll have to, they've had to register, and it gets into what the kind of chemicals they have on site. There are minimums, and there are thresholds over a certain amount. The DEP gets involved, and they have the authority. Underneath that, it's, it's local authority, and as we know from the Aquifer Board, for those who have been participating, we have about, I think, 16 to 19 people who are registered. We haven't had anybody new come in that needs to be registered. So that's the essence of the program. Difficult to go over the whole thing here, but I wanted to share the email, and I'm happy to share it with anybody who would like to see it.
To further what Bill said, this board, when they came out with the new boundary lines, the current Aquifer lines, this board spent a significant amount of time discussing. We wanted to keep the old ones, and went back and forth, and we got the town attorney's opinion, and the opinion was that if we adhered and enforced the old lines, we're setting us up for a lawsuit. So our hands are kind of tied. If you can't enforce something, you shouldn't have the rule.
Well, my recollection was that we had a choice as to whether to keep it or to keep the original size or reduce it, so...
Yes, that's why we talked about it, but that was the town's, town attorney's opinion, that if you don't follow the state, then you're at risk.
I have nothing further, ma'am chair.
Okay. Do we have the zoning board liaison to planning? I think, Ms. Susko, you went to the last meeting?
My apologies, I didn't go, I looked online and I said it was canceled on the...
Oh, maybe it was.
It was canceled.
So, okay.
Was that the first one?
Would you like to go to the one on March 12?
I don't think it did.
Okay.
I almost forgot, Mrs. Hardy.
We're supposed to get some now, aren't we?
We can.
Can I ask a question about the Aquifer?
Sure.
Is there a general sense of concern, or are certain individuals or organizations worried about polluting the Aquifer from the lower-impact activities?
Okay, thank you.
That are exempt from the rules, and such that we've learned some things that we shouldn't be doing, that we should be incorporating into other regulations that would control those?
It's actually a state-mandated program, so we are obligated to follow what they do.
Yeah.
Which we do.
But I mean, there's a lot of, I hear a lot of worry, and maybe it's misunderstanding, about the impacts, about the state of Aquifer.
I haven't had anybody in the office asking any questions, and everybody's welcome to come on down.
Yeah. So you've not heard of any particular concern about, you know, lower-intensity commercial or...
No, and I think everybody's obviously concerned, we all live here, we all drink the water, and we all realize if there's no water, there's no community. So everybody has that concern, and when we have development come in the office, we have a pretty good team that looks at everything.
There we go.
As you saw tonight, we typically, we did a lot more about drainage on this project than we typically do, which is typically handled by the staff, but there's a lot of time that goes into looking at these projects, and every one is essentially treated the same. A lot of eyes go on it to try to get the best product, so by the time it gets here, there's been a lot of eyes on it already. And I think the commission does a good job of, you know, adding on to that, scrutinizing that.
Ms. Hardy, did you have any other news from the Board of Selectmen?
Just that I've been here since quarter of five tonight.
Oh.
When we started our first budget hearings, and I think that Mr. Mahollen must have the date of when zoning is going to appear.
I haven't received any notice.
Okay. I didn't, I didn't bring those things, my notebook was like this.
I will check tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, and the only thing I'd like to remind people, we do have an opening for a new alternate, so if you know anyone interested, please have them forward their interest to Jessica, if you could give me an email address right now.
J-L-A-R-O-C-O at E-L-L-H-O dot com.
There you go. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved.
Second, all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned.
She gets down.
At 9:41.